All right, meeting will be called a order. I'm gonna go ahead and put it in recess because we have a special presentation we would like to do. So before we start with that, I just want to say I got notified about a week ago that one of our members is gonna be leaving us, Ms. Vasquez, and I just want to say that it's been a pleasure and an honor to work with you. Your dedication to this community and to this board and to everybody that is involved in trying to make IA a better place has been just, you're an example that is, that people should be looking towards. And I really appreciate everything you've done, and thank you so much, Lynn. There's some things I want to do. I just don't have enough time to do it. So I'm hoping that you stay in contact. That way I can, I can do those things for you. But there are others that, that would like to do some things. Councilman or council member?
Okay, board member Vasquez Delasterna, I would like to, on behalf of the city council, we would like to present you with this. And on a point of personal privilege, I would like to share that not only have I been able to work with you here on IA Neighborhood Board, but also two other neighborhood boards. So I've had the opportunity as the, not just as a council member, but also as a council staff for the LaLita Neighborhood Board, as well as the Kaliki Palama Neighborhood Board. So wherever you root down, I know that you'll have so much, so many more roots throughout the rest of our state because of all the work that you do. So this is just something for both myself and council member Okimoto and the rest of the council.
Oh, thank you so much. God bless. Thank you so much.
Lynn, the floor is yours. Do you have anything you wanna?
I came here fifteen years ago. And I really love IA. I'm gonna miss it. Cher was the Jared Jane. And the old neighborhood board took me in and I learned a lot from them. I'm gonna miss you, Jane. I miss you too. Thank you to IA and especially you, Tracy. Thanks for everything. And Brandon, thank you. I saw you. When I first came on the IA Neighborhood Board, he was sitting next to me. Saw you rise. And council member, so sweet. And everybody. I'll keep in touch. Thank you so much to IA, Pro Ridge. I'll be, I'll be around. Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll call the meeting back out of recess. We'll start with the monthly reports on the Lulu Fire Department.
Good evening, Neighborhood Board. My name is Derek Leong. I'm a firefighter at the IA Fire Station. Just gonna run over last year of December's statistics that we have. So starting off, should you have any questions, please email hfd's community relations office at hfdnhb@hanlugu.gov. So for the information, we're gonna start with incident statistics for December 2023. So for fires, we had one structure fire, five nuisance fires, one cooking, and five activated alarms, no fire. For emergencies, we had 125 medicals. We had two motor vehicle collisions with a pedestrian. We had five motor vehicle crash collisions. And we had one hazardous material incident. Nuisance fires include rubbish fires outside a structure or a vehicle. So that concludes the statistics that we have from last month. We have our safety tip for this, this month. So this month's fire safety tip is gonna be with lithium ion batteries. Kind of a common problem now we're seeing. So lithium ion batteries supply power to many kinds of devices, including smartphones, laptops, e-scooters and e-bikes, e-cigarettes, smoke alarms, toys, and even cars now. If not used correctly or if damaged, these batteries can catch on fire or explode. So I'm gonna go over some, some tips for lithium batteries. Always follow the manufacturer's instructions. Only use the battery and charging cords that were designed for the device. So nothing, you know, aftermarket or anything like that. Replace cords that are damaged, frayed, or sticky to the touch. Charge devices in a cool area with good ventilation. Do not keep charging the device or device battery after it is fully charged. E-scooters and e-bikes should only be charged outdoors. Smaller devices should be placed on a hard, non-flammable surface when charging. Never under your pillow, on your bed, or on a couch. Another good practice is on top of charging it indoors, it'd be also good to maybe leave these like e-bikes and scooters like that outside in general. You don't want to store them in your house. And always store batteries away from anything that can catch fire. Any questions?
Board members, any questions for Lulu Fire Department?
I have, but it's relating to January 1st. You know, the New Year's, we still have a lot of illegal and loud, loud fireworks. But I know they confiscated quite a lot, so it wasn't as bad. Do you guys kind of know where these, you know, crowds, because down my place, I know, just look at all the rubbish in front of their house. But what if they get caught and they don't have a permit? What are their penalties? If they get caught, it's really hard to catch them. Is it too early to ask about January?
Yeah, I mean, well, for the penalties, that's, that would be more so on maybe HPD's side of things. We're, we're really just for response for, say, fire or anything like that.
No fire.
Sorry?
No fire, that's good.
Yeah, yeah, so we're, I mean, we can't really control that. Just more so, yeah, just if things were to go wrong, you know, we're, we're there for the, the after. Yeah.
It's the loud noises that's really frightening. Those weird people.
But I can, I can follow up with that for maybe next month.
Okay.
Board members, any other questions? So I have a question for you. Do you have any insight on where the mayor's task force is on terms of like wildfire prevention and that activity?
So the, the task force on the wildfires or brush fires?
Yes.
I can say just what I've seen so far is that we're now, we're now gonna be dispatching more trucks to, you know, these wildfires. More importantly, tankers for water source and water supply and that. And I think an extra engine as well. It's gonna be, instead of just sending one engine company, it's gonna be probably two and a tanker. And on top of that, we've had to do amongst the stations kind of our, our own pre-planning and, you know, high-risk areas in the area. So we've here at the fire station at IA, we've gone over some high-risk areas that, that we deemed needed attention and pre-planned that into our own systems and kind of, you know, went there ourselves and did these things to, you know, to be better prepared for any brush fires in the future.
Did you see any kind of like fire breaks being created or anything like that, or is there any plans on doing that?
Sorry, what was that again?
A fire break, like a, you know, creating fire breaks.
So as in a fire break, that, that's the stuff that we've, we've probably, if, if deemed possible and necessary for certain places, we, we would, you know, implement those in the event of emergencies, but nothing like currently.
Okay, so that's not a preventive measure, that's more of a?
That's more of an active measure when there actually is a fire, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. All right, community members, any questions for HFD?
Hi, Garnishinizu, resident. I had a question. Your hazardous waste incidents, could you explain what that was?
Do you know what that one was? Yeah, it could have been on a different watch. I don't believe that was our watch or our crew that went to that. I just have the statistics for the amount. I'm, I'm not necessarily sure what the, what the event was in December. I can also look that up and I can report that as well. You know, next month, I'll, we'll follow up on that.
Okay, thanks. I, I was just guessing it might have been related to your safety tip with the batteries maybe catching fire.
That, that can be a hazmat incident, but mostly the, the major concern is the, the fire. They burn pretty hot and much larger than the battery itself, especially in the vehicles. And that's been a focus our department's been trying to catch up on, being that there's a lot of batteries now or lithium ion batteries that are hitting the market in vehicles and the bikes and scooters you've probably been seeing running around. And we've been kind of doing some classes on that as well. But as in terms of hazardous materials, it's more of the smoke from when the, when the fire actually is active. The smoke is a, is a hazardous substance, so that's something we, we also, you know, try to mitigate at the incident.
Right, Mahalo.
All right, thank you. Hey, thank you for your report. Appreciate it. And thank you for everything you guys do out there.
They do.
HPD, Honolulu Police Department?
Hi, can, can anybody hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, hi, so I'm Sergeant Kigge with HPD. Hold on. Is there an echo on your end?
Sergeant, you still there?
Okay, sorry, I'm back. I'm having some technical difficulties. Can you hear me now?
Yep, we sure can.
Okay, yeah, so I'm Sergeant Kigge with HPD, Rokata the Pro City Police Station. First of all, I wanted to tell everybody Happy New Year. I'll be going over the stats compared from December 2023 to November 2023. So as far as motor vehicle thefts, there were ten reported in December as compared to nine in November. Six burglaries in December as compared to four in November. Twenty-one thefts as compared to thirty-one thefts in November. And then fifteen unauthorized entry into motor vehicle cases in December as compared to twelve in November. As far as total calls for service, there were 5,730 calls for service in December of 2023 as compared to 5,535 in November of 2023. And in regards to your fireworks inquiry, possession of, anybody in possession of, I believe it's less than 25 pounds of illegal fireworks, they would be guilty of a misdemeanor. If they, if they're in possession of, in excess of 25 pounds, then it would be a Class C felony. I'm not sure if that answered your previous question.
Hey, does that answer your question?
That's enough.
Okay.
Maybe the next one will have.
All right. Okay, you still there, HPD?
Yes, is any, yes, any other questions?
All right, is, is, does that conclude your report?
Yes, yes, sir.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, board members, any questions for HPD? I'm sure there is. Jane, go ahead.
I'm wondering what could be done about these vehicles that are along our main arteries in our neighborhoods that, that are just so loud. They're, they're speakers. Thump and bump so loud, they're extremely disruptive to the community. I wondered even if they're disruptive to help because sometimes they're so loud, it makes my body shake and even, even our, our, the structure of our building. So I was wondering what could be done about all of that.
What? What particular area or street are you talking about?
I live at the corner of, oh, I personally live at the corner of Mahalo Road and Cano. And it's, it's constant, just constant.
Okay, I apologize, Mahalo, and what's the cross?
Oh, it's right across the street from Pearlwood Chucky's Center.
Okay, is it a particular time or date that's?
Times of day, even during the night, but all times of day.
That's mainly.
Are any of the citizens bothered by this or?
In the mall.
In the mall, the street.
Well, I mean, I, I live, I live near Salt Lake Boulevard and I hear it constantly. Between motorcycles and cars, I hear it all the time.
Yeah, that's one of the main intersections.
What's the nearest cross off Salt Lake Boulevard?
The nearest cross is Canoe Street.
On Salt Lake Boulevard, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, he and.
Mahalo, that's the main intersection.
Right, are, are you looking to see what his intersection is? We, on our, these wild, loud vehicles on our street?
No, no, I got that car. I know somebody else made up some place on Salt Lake Boulevard.
Yeah. Do you want to know where your?
Oh, I'm just right across from the stadium, so like, you know where that McDonald's is at over there? I live right.
I was wondering what could be done about that. It's just, it's pervasive and it's constant, yeah.
Is that something they check? Is that something they check when they do the safety inspections?
Well, I think the recon, the recon laws are changing now and they're being, the responsibility of that is being deemed on the safety check inspections. It's no longer with city recon.
That, and I, I mean, it's just so much, there's so much noise. People choose, choose to be loud. These, these, the towns that I'm talking about are people in their cars that are choosing to be disruptive to others. It's, it's not just allow something here and there.
Are they driving?
Yes. And, and stoplight?
I don't see that. I have no idea. Okay, so they're driving loud.
Okay, so, yeah, I can understand how frustrating that would be. What I can do is I can talk to the sergeants who are responsible for that particular area and have officers make periodic checks of those two areas specifically for now. If cars are parked and they're not moving, you can always call 911 and have an officer respond to come and check. But we'll make every attempt to increase patrols and enforce any kind of criminal violation that we can.
Well, these cars are mostly moving except when they're at a stop at an intersection. And I live 26 floors up and I can hear the lyrics, the words of the lyrics. And this is all the time, all the time. It's why, this is my single time I could point to at all because it's all the time.
Okay, yeah, I'd be more than happy to direct officers to patrol that area when they're available.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Oh, no problem.
Board members, any other questions?
I'm concerned about safety and I live underneath the freeway of Porter Street the second. And every night after midnight, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, you hear every, the racing car.
Yeah, they're racing.
And one day, I swear, they're gonna hit, and, and a major collision.
So Sergeant, what they're doing is, is they're, yeah, so Sergeant, what they're doing is they're racing on H1 from basically the airport all the way to probably Newtown.
Yeah, you can hear that.
Yeah, so, so I hear them constantly. They're, they're racing down the freeway.
So ironically, they run all the way from town all the way to Wynine, where they run to Milani. And what they'll do is they'll have two or three cars block traffic.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been on the freeway myself a couple of times and have arrested a few people for reckless driving and speeding. If it, it, it's to note that our chief has made a priority of racing on the highways. So we have our traffic division out monitoring. We have our patrol units monitoring with a zero tolerance enforcement policy. It's just hard to be on the freeway every minute of the day to catch every single person racing on the highway.
Now, my last one for sure. You know, before, they used to have a raceway park and then the, you know, they used to drive around and some kind of organized. They discontinued that, yeah?
Yeah, I think the, the, the person who started that raceway got found guilty of some environmental violation, so they shut down that raceway.
They don't have that anymore. But if they were to, legally, that would take some of the traffic on the freeway because the freeway, I mean, more, you know, innocent people are gonna get killed.
Yes, absolutely. I think you're absolutely correct.
Okay.
I think you said something about that, with the racing. We're the only island that don't have a raceway. We're the only island that puts out more taxes, tax money than any else. Yet we don't have a raceway. Something is wrong with that. I need to hook into that. That's totally wrong.
Yeah, I think that would be a great idea. I think that would probably be maybe more up your alley than it would be ours unfortunately.
Yeah, that's something we need to bring up with the legislators to actually. Okay, before we jump off into the community concerns, I just want to mention that in IA, we had two shootings over the period of time. We also had an HPD police officer hit, a motorcycleist over by the stadium. I, I'm hoping Sergeant, that this isn't a trend, that these are one-offs and that just kind of everything happens in threes. But, but, yeah, so, so it just, it's been a really unfortunate last couple of months. And I know you guys have been really, really busy about that. So, but yeah, I just wanted to bring that up. That's all.
Yeah, unfortunately, times are changing. It's, it's not the same place I grew up in, definitely.
Okay, all right, community members, anything for HPD before we move on? Okay, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. We had several accidents by the old IA library. Would the police do their report, does any contact is being, if our worker family are, if it's a lighting issue, speeding, maybe the lane strike property? And how do we go about if we, if having that inspection mercy?
You know, I apologize. It's, it's your little muffle that couldn't quite catch all of that.
All right, can you turn on to the mic?
All right. I was asking about those accidents happening by the old IA library. There's been several accidents there and the cars been taking down telephone poles or going into the residents' fences in that area. When the police goes to the scene and do their investigation, do they determine whether it's a speed issue, a lighting issue, maybe lane striking issue? And do they communicate what they find with the city to see if something can be done to make it a safer intersection?
Yes, they do. All those, all those major accidents get referred to our traffic division and our traffic division will make the appropriate investigative steps as far as those concerns.
So as far as on the resident side, monitoring actually what's being done, anything on the resident side we can do so that we can try and push it through? Because I think within the last three months, there've been three or four serious accidents that the police actually had to block the road down. And it happens early in the morning, so I'm not sure if it's DUI or the driver's just being tired.
I know that last one you're talking about was speed related. It was no impairment involved as far as I believe.
Maybe I can help here. So there's a, online, there's like a 311 site, I think is what it is. Logan, you remember? Yeah. Yeah, and on there you can request certain things. And one of those is like traffic mitigation stuff. So I would take a look on there and submit a ticket and have DTS come out and do a study on that location.
Somebody will come check it out. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, he'll provide like a geotag.
Right, yeah, you'll be able to put a geotag on the location you want them to have them look at. Right.
He goes, yeah, it's been kind of bad at that intersection.
Okay, community members, anything else for HPD? Let them go. They've had enough tonight. Okay, nothing heard. Sergeant, thank you for your time. Appreciate the report.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, Board of Water Supply. Okay.
This is Amy Sinis from the Board of Water Supply. I have the main break report. There is five main breaks for December. And one of our tips for the New Year's is, it's a great time to change small habits that can make big impacts, especially for water conservation. So some easy ways to save water are to check leaks inside and outside of your home. Replace your old toilet or purchase a rain barrel and qualify for rebate. And consider planting drought tolerant plants. And use a nozzle for your garden hose. More information and tips can be found at our website, boardofwatersupply.com backslash leak detection. Also, the Zaroscape Garden, Halapa Zaroscape Garden will be closed to the public from January through April of 2024 for facility renovation. The repairs and building upgrades of our office and pavilion will be made to improve visitor experience and enhance Board of Water Supply efforts to educate the community on water conservation. And finally, I have some follow-up responses from questions from the November meeting. So the first question was, how much, how much of a percentage of Oahu's water does the military use? And the response is the Board of Water Supply can only provide information about its own customers' use. So the Marine Corps Base Hawaii, Kaneohe, is a Board of Water Supply customer and it uses an average of 2.5 MGD. Other military bases are served by their own water sources. And so the State Department of Land and Natural Resources, Commission of Water Resource Management, can tell you how much water the military uses. They manage all the groundwater resources in this state. And the second question was, does the Board of Water Supply charge Marine Corps Base Hawaii more for its water use? And the response is water rate, a water use rate for Oahu residents is here with the lowest here at $4.46 per thousand gallon up to the first 2,000 gallons. The Marine Corps Base water uses, water use is charged at a flat, non-residential water rate of $5.27 per thousand gallon. Overall, Marine Corps Base pays a lot more for water used by their military personnel and their dependents living on its base. And that's all I have for my report.
All right, thank you. Board members, any questions for, for Water Supply? Okay, I, oh, sir, hold on just for a second. So I have been seeing that you, I've been seeing the email traffic about the water rate increases that are gonna be occurring. Can you have basically brief us, brief this board next month on that particular topic?
Okay, I'll let Tracy know to provide an update on the water, water rate increases.
I mean, I'm not talking just an update. I mean, it'll be a full-on 10-minute brief thing. I don't want an update. I want, I want basically a understanding of why the rate increases, what's causing the rate increases. And, you know, is, does it have to do with Red Hill? You know, those kind of things, right?
Okay.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you. Community members, sir?
They had a break, I think it was on Haleiwa, water break, with a big shot and all flooded. And it took a, an hour before he, before he was shut off. He tells us why, why he was so long to shut it off.
I'm sorry, you kind of muffled.
He said there was a water main, a water main break in Haleiwa and it took about an hour to shut it off. And he was wondering why it took so long to, for the technicians to shut it off.
Okay, I can find that information out and get back to you folks.
Okay, thank you. Sir, anything else?
Yeah, I believe that, that was in the fire department. We have the tool to shut off the beam broken. But the new, I, I saw nobody there. I thought the water people or the fire department.
So basically, he didn't, he, he knows that the fire department has the tools to shut it off, but he didn't see anybody there to do it. That's why it took so long.
Okay, I will, I will check on that.
Okay. Sir?
Yeah, I was watching Ernie Law on TV and he mentioned that Board of Water Supply is filing a 1.2 billion dollar, was it billion? 1.2 billion dollar claim against the federal government because of what happened at Red Hill. But he said as far as doing new wells to, I guess, bring the capacity back to par. it was gonna be 267 million. Where's all the rest of that money going to that they're filing the claim for? And what is the status of that claim, that 1.2 billion dollar claim?
Okay, that's a good question. I will also make a note about the claim and the sources and what the difference between that and where the money is going to forward and I will get back to you on that.
Okay, but I'm kind of old, so I'm not sure if I got all the details correct, but it's just when I was watching Ernie Law, I recall him mentioning that and the math didn't add up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? Okay, nothing hurt. All right, thank you for your report and look forward to the presentation and briefing next month on um on the rate increase along with answering the questions of that particular topic.
Okay.
Okay, Stadium Authority, thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um it's Samantha Spain with Aloha Stadium. I'll do my report um quickly and then turn it over to Jeff. Um so on behalf of Aloha Stadium, we just wanted to wish everyone a Happy New Year and that we are happy to report that there were no incidents this past holiday season as we wrap up the Holiday Light Show event on Christmas Day. Um we really appreciate the community's support um and we're actually looking forward to the possibility of working with the show Aloha Challenge team again in 2024. Um so you'll still see, everything is up in the lower Halava Lot and they are getting ready to break that down and store um some of the equipment with us. And then he is still kind of up in the air if he's going to bring it back for 2024, so that's something that we're working with him. Um and as soon as we know, we will let you know. Um other than that, this is kind of a slower month for us um for January and February, so I can report that SCCA um Hawaii, which is the solo car event, happens in the lower Halava Lot, will be returning um on Sundays. Right now, we have them on February 4th, 11th and 25th. And then we have them um three other days coming up in March. So once we have those, we will confirm that with um with all of you guys and let you know. Other than that, that's kind of all the news that I have for the current stadium. Um and I will turn it over to Jeff Ramsey to give the report for Chris.
Good evening Chair, good evening Board and good evening public. Um yep, sitting in for uh Chris Kinnamaka this evening. Uh the main thing that I can um give you some highlights on is the procurement process for the stadium and NACED project. If you've been watching the news lately uh starting uh back in the middle of December, we did issue the uh initial phase of the current procurement process, uh the qualifications phase of the RFP. Um we've been communicating with potential uh proposing developers. Um to answer any questions, so far all they've had are a couple of somewhat procedural questions, uh no big earth-shattering issues from any of them. Um we do expect to have additional conversations with them, with with the potential uh developers over the next few weeks. Uh proposals for this first round of qualification uh is due the middle of February. Um following that, we should get uh proposals a little more refined and whittled down to a shortlist by April. Uh we're still on track to um sign up an eventual developer team uh roughly the end of 24, beginning of 2025. And then uh of course, following that would be demolition of the existing stadium and design and build back of the new with opening in time for the 2028 UH football season. Um part of the news that we have um that will facilitate the whole project is that uh the mayor signed Bills 50 and 51 to formalize the Halava TOD master plan into ordinance. Um those ordinance uh rules and regulations are really uh no surprise, but uh is is the formalization of all of the design parameters that uh we've been trying to work towards with the overall uh NACED development. Um I think that's about the gist of the news I have. Um Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you. Board members, any questions for Stadium Authority? I I for one am looking forward to my Sundays having Screech and Tires again, so it's gonna be great.
Sorry.
Letting me know that. Um but it goes back to the thing which we were talking about earlier about having a proper racetrack here on Island and that's a whole different subject, so. Um thank you guys for your report. Okay, uh before we leave though, uh community members, any questions for Stadium Authority? Okay, nothing heard. Okay, thank you guys for your report, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, uh O triple C.
Awesome. Good evening Chairwood, members of the board, members of the community. I would like to wish everybody a Happy New Year. I am Bettina Maynard from AHL and I'm the lead. We are the lead of the O triple C design team. I have three um bullets tonight. Um our newsletter, those of you that are anxiously awaiting it, is number 51. I had hoped to have it out um before this meeting tonight. It's going through some last minute edits, so look forward to it in your inbox um later this week. The sneak peek is that it will focus or that it focuses on the two departments that um resulted uh on this uh from the split of PSD. And um one of them is the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. It's DCR, I have to get used to saying it that way. Um it was established with the single focus of enhancing adult correction. Um I think for this neighborhood, this is particularly um relevant because so much has been um discussed here about uh rehabilitation programs and uh reentry services. Um all of the uh agencies, personnel and resources in that department are dedicated towards uh rehabilitations. Um the other department is DLE um and those uh under that umbrella will be state law enforcement um and several departments um that serve that. Um I would like to read to you the, if you don't mind, the mission statement that was just released. Um it is quite lovely and this is from their website. Uh it's short. The mission of the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, DCR, is to provide a secure correctional environment for comprehensive, rehabilitative, holistic and wraparound reentry services. That includes culturally-based approaches to people sentenced to our custody and care with professionalism, integrity, respect and fairness. Our goal is to reduce recidivism and enhance the safety and security of our communities. I think this is quite lovely. Um second thing I wanted to mention, tilting a little bit here. Um the architectural from our team space program reports that we mentioned um in our last meeting, both for the Community Correctional Center as well as the Detention Building, have been completed and posted online. There's a tiny hiccup because since the co- then since the department was renamed to DCR, we need to, not we, but um the link to it right now is not working. Um the department is diligently working on getting this up. And very lastly here, um the legislative uh session has begun and I look forward to reporting on any builds or resolutions that are relevant to our O triple C project. And that concludes my report. Any questions or comments?
All right, thank you. Board members, any questions for O triple C? Okay, nothing heard. Community members, any questions? Okay, nothing heard. Okay, thank you for your report. Thank you Bettina.
Of course, thank you.
Hey, all right, uh Pro Ridge Shopping Center, David.
Hello, Chairwood, to our members, Happy New Year. Um got about 18 items on my handout, I'm only gonna highlight about a third of them, I promise. Um very, very excited to finally, after 18 months, announce the opening of the Fuji Sushi and Teppanyaki Restaurant. They opened about like December 20th. Um they are offering sushi and teppanyaki dishes uh for both lunch and dinner. Uh I've been there three times already. Um the staff is awesome, the food is great and the the teppanyaki chefs are a lot of fun and um I I would highly encourage you to uh give it a shot.
Do you have a price point on those guys? Like, what are they looking at?
It it really varies, any, and your appetizer's anywhere 13, 18 dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, but the teppanyaki, depending on what you choose. Um I think very, it it's a good value.
Okay.
Uh and it it's just so much fun.
Okay.
I just need to get used to how to catch the pieces of broccoli when they flip.
Right.
I have to get good at that. Um so uh just quickly, two new food trucks, one featuring uh Caribbean-style food and one featuring Venezuelan food and they are down in our food truck area on Cam Highway. Um some of our live entertainment and arts, the um we're proud to host several of the court members of the 72nd Annual Cherry Blossom Festival. Um the contestants uh will be sharing their Japanese heritage and traditions with us on Saturday, February 3rd from noon to 2:00 PM in our Maka Center Court. The um UH Manoa Orchestra will be performing uh several of their musical pieces on Sunday, February the 4th, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM, again in our Maka Center Court. Um Chinese New Year is right around the corner, I believe it's the Year of the Dragon. Um they will be at our shopping center, they had um doing in-store blessings and that will take place on Saturday, February 10th, from 10:30 uh AM to 12:30 PM. And uh Moana Law Middle School will be performing at Pro Ridge Center as well. That performance takes place Saturday, February 24th, from 12:30 to 1:10 PM. Um one of my favorites is Island Craft Share, I'm sorry, Island Craft Fair. Um this is 80 local artisans, uh entrepreneurs, they're all local. Um gifts, jewelry, apparel. Um they will be at the shopping center for Saturday, January 20th and Sunday, January 21st and again Saturday, February 17th and Sunday, February 18th in Maka Center Court. And they will be there from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And finally, just member of just uh mentioned our Zoom classes and we do have the Blundag coming back February 9th. That concludes my report.
All right.
Any questions?
All right, thank you. Uh Board members, any questions for the Pro Ridge Shopping Center? Community members, any questions? Sir?
You have a question earlier regarding the exit by Central Pacific Bank, a problem at a business. There's Stephen Boston there now, and we meet on that turn. A car coming down, it's all on follow too. It's like a blind, we cannot see the car with the bus, the bus is blocking that area. Is that the landlord responsibility to ensure the safety of where it's on that journey? Or is it the responsibility of the senior town? Because I'm pretty sure there have been accidents that are kind of serious. You cannot see the cars coming down, they're going down at 35, 40. You mean the left turn, but the right turn? Is that the landlord's responsibility?
Not being, not as far as traffic control goes, no. That no, that's not.
Okay. All right, uh just just as a binder, it's hard to hear online when you're not up on the mic, so just let you, let everybody who's in person know that um if you want to be heard on or be recorded, uh you want to get up to the mic. Okay, uh David, thank you. Thank you for your time. Okay, uh US Navy and the DOD, Victor?
Are you gonna go first?
Uh what's that?
Do you want to go first?
Okay, okay, great.
Hi, hi, yeah, this is Lydia um online, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Um thank you for the opportunity. I wish I could be there tonight. I'm uh getting over a really bad cold and I've got several folks sick in my family, so want to spare you all with all the stuff going around. Also joining us tonight is a representative from Joint Task Force Red Hill, Commander Nico Melendez is online. Um they don't have a presentation, but if there are questions about defueling or the transition, he's happy to step in and offer to uh provide information. So I'll start with the overview and then turn it over to Victor and then we can have questions. So first, um you all have hopefully seen in the news or on the app that you are using for the Joint Task Force that the gravity defueling was finished before Christmas and now the Joint Task Force is going to start the residual fuel removal about 60,000 gallons and they're working with the new Navy Closure Task Force Red Hill. This is going to be an important time of transition, working together. Um the Joint Task Force will share their lessons learned, um their expertise, some of the work that they've accomplished and many members of the Joint Task Force will actually be joining the Navy Closure Task Force as well. Um so this is an important several-month period until the Navy Closure Task Force takes over the responsibility for the permanent closure of Red Hill and the remediation. Um the long-term monitoring is continuing of the water in the joint base water distribution system and we provide the updates on those long-term monitorings. Um you've probably seen a couple of press releases or another information that's come out. We continue to test the water. We take any complaints or concerns that any folks have and provide some rapid testing and then some more thorough testing to make sure that um we are keeping that the water safe and that it meets all of the state and federal safe drinking water standards. We work with the regulators on this, so DOH and EPA are uh, they have the information we have. We provide them all the updates if we get calls of concern. And as of uh as of yesterday, we haven't had that many more calls of concerns, but again, we do log those, we track those and we have information for folks. Um let's see, as far as closure, we are making uh progress on the plans that we're providing to the regulators on that as well. And we are posting all of the different supplements and all that we give to the regulators online. We have our Red Hill website, we can put that information in the chat when we're done here. And the annual water quality report that we do as water purveyors is available online as well. And that's all the updates I have on Red Hill, so I will turn it over to Vic and then we can take questions after that.
Thanks, Lydia. Aloha Board, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Viper Flit Naval Facilities. Are the ques- questions and concerns from uh last month about the harbor water quality? Um we addressed them and sent the reports and pictures into the board on January 4th. Uh yesterday, 3:00 PM, 1.9 million gallons of partially-treated wastewater were released. The wastewater released was never irradiated by our ultraviolet system and that's the final of our four-stage treatment system. Uh the cause of the uh power, the cause of the discharge was a power failure during yesterday's heavy rainstorm and the discharge outfall uh is about a mile and a half out and over 150 feet deep through a diffuser. And we had power restored five hours later. Uh Department of Health was notified, signs were posted, along with a press release uh really posted. Students from Nagaoka Elementary School is visiting Pearl Harbor, we're setting that up and coordinating with uh the Nagaoka folks. Uh Nagaoka is the sister city of Honolulu, that's kind of interesting. On February 2nd, Le Hua On February second, Lejua Elementary School staff and facility will be visiting Pearl Harbor. This is in coordination with the Navy and the National Park Service. Staff and facility will visit the Arizona Memorial, the Visitor Center, and other sites as well. And we look forward to sharing our rich molella with them. Last, Navy is coordinating with Make-A-Wish Foundation and the Miller family. Their daughter wishes to visit Pearl Harbor and see the ships and meet with other lady sailors. The Navy is going to ensure this child gets her wish. That's all I have. Are there any questions? Oh, one more thing. I have an answer to the daily use for the Navy. We're allotted by D L N R. They own the water and dictate to the water purveyors how much water we can use per day. The Navy has allotted fourteen point eight million gallons, and we use just under that.
All right, thank you. Board members, any questions for Navy? Okay, nothing heard. Community members, any questions for Navy? Sir?
Hey, brother. Okay, I tell the article, they said the Senate passes National Defense Authorization Act containing Toronto-led provisions to provide one billion to close Red Hill the facility. And I was wondering, when they authorize this one billion in funding for Red Hill recovery, is any of that money used to make the community whole or to make B W S whole? What is that money used for?
Lydia?
Can you hear me?
So my understanding was it's one point two billion that Congress authorized, right?
Pretty long.
Hi, this is Lydia. So there are a couple of different parts to that. So the the closure is a significant effort, and there are various contracts that are going to be involved in the cleaning of the tanks and the removal of about ten miles of pipeline. And that work is being put together. Those plans are being submitted for approval. So that money's been allotted to take care of the various steps. It's going to be several years to do the closure, and then there's the ongoing remediation. As far as the B W S part, they are working with the government separately on a claim. I don't have all the information on that. That is a legal issue, but they have submitted a claim. And, and I know that there are, the legal offices are working through that part. But the the money that you're talking about is, is addressing the multi-year closure that involves, like I said, the cleaning, and then there's some destructive measures that that need to happen to get the very last bit of the the fuel and other materials out.
Wait, that being said, as far as the cleaning, I read a couple of articles about contaminated soil and how to decontaminate it. There's no way you can decontaminate the soil unless you actually excavate it and put it in a hazardous waste site. And because it's already infiltrating into the aquifer, it's been happening for decades, ten, twenty, thirty years. As far as the the federal government trying to make everything pure again, what kind of process are they looking at? Because the oil is already in the ground.
That remediation plan is being developed as we talked too. So we have to take this in steps. The Joint Task Force, like I mentioned, just finished the gravity defueling. Now, the Joint Task Force is going to work with the Navy Closure Task Force to get out the residual fuel. And then the Navy will take it to the next step to get out the very last bits, you know, maybe in in elbows of pipes. And then they're going to remove the pipelines. They need to do the cleaning of it. As this work is going on, once we have, once we're working in the facility ourselves, that's when we start doing the remediation, and we're doing that with the regulators. That plan is being developed because we have to research what is, what is where. And this is going to be a very in-depth look. So this is going to be something that it is a longer-term effort. And we're here to do that longer-term effort, and that's why we're working with D O H and E P A and other stakeholders to make sure that we do get it right.
And the Navy, when the Navy develops this remediation plan, can they come in front of the board here and brief that to us?
Yes, well, we can certainly provide you updates on that, and we will get, I don't know when that remediation plan will be ready. And I think that's going to be a little bit further down the road. The research going, is going into it now, but we can put that down as a, a longer term, when that's available, that you're definitely interested in it.
Okay, as far as the E P A's involvement, if this was like a private mom-and-pop gas station, the E P A would be fining that mom-and-pop gas stations hundreds of thousands of dollars. But as far as the E P A's part in the federal side, does, can the E P A find the federal government because they spill all that fuel?
That would be a question for E P A, and I know that they're on the agenda. I'm not sure if Dominique is is on next. But I will tell you that we're working with the E P on this and with D O H. We meet with them a lot during a given month, during a given week, at at different staff levels. So we're sharing reports. We're giving them information. We have it. They have access to the data that we have, and we're making sure that we're working together to use subject matter experts, to use years of expertise in other areas, again, to make sure that we get this done right.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Any other?
Thanks for the question.
Okay, nothing hurt. All right, thank you, guys, for your report. Appreciate it.
Aloha.
Thank you.
E P A? I don't think Dominique's on. Okay, moving on. D O T? Okay.
Let me show my screen. Yeah.
There it is. So, hey, Casey, before we, before we start into your thing, I just want to say that I I've heard or I read that the Kalihie folks are, are, you know, the businesses along the the rail path are complaining about U-turns, just like the Pearl City folks were complaining about U-turns, and everybody else seems to be complaining about U-turns. So is there a way the state's going to find a way to mitigate this issue?
That Dillingham is part of the city, so you'd have to work with our, the city representative, the municipal representative.
Okay, so, so so the city is the one that has to deal with this. You guys don't deal with it, even though you're in kind of control until you turn it over to the city?
No, the, the rail is a city's project.
Okay.
So that's what it is, but I'm, I guess I'm getting technical difficulties here. Okay.
So then, why, why did we have to come to you folks and talk to you about the U-turns?
Or talk to us?
Pearl City.
It's on, or the city.
Yeah. If it's a city thing, why do we have to talk to the state D O T about it?
I'm not sure. I, I, my understanding, you have to talk to HART and the city.
No, I'm not talking about the rail. I'm talking about U-turns along the rail.
Along the rail for, on Cam Highway, that's a state road that was temporarily turned over to the HART, when they built the HART. And of course.
But Dillingham is not a state road. That's a city road, is what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, so it's a city road, so you have to talk to the city.
All right, so during the construction of, of the rail, the authority would be HART, and then once HART's done, it goes to the city when it's a city road, and it goes to state when it's a state road like Cam Highway.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, all right. So we need to talk to HART about U-turns because they keep doing this all the way along the line, and all the businesses along that line are complaining about U-turns and loss of business. Okay, thank you. Okay, sorry, go ahead. You can start.
Okay, yeah, I'm just getting technically difficult in my, my video here. But I just want to report that I want to thank Senator Elefante for his December sixth email about damaged chain-link fence on both the Diamond Head side of Kaheli Street and the other side of Kaheli Street under H one via dot com, where we also found some graffiti. Our maintenance crew did repair the fences as requested and, and mentioned. But that's all I have. Sorry, I don't, my video is malfunctioning tonight. I can't share my video, but.
No, it's okay. Thank you. Board members, any questions for D O T?
Yeah, I know. Hey, Casey, you know that steel plate that you guys had done that patched by Kahua Paani Street and Uluuni a couple of months ago?
Yes.
That asphalt patch right now is starting to compact up again. They're starting to dissolve. Questions of that's, that's.
Okay.
You guys can be aware of that so that we don't end up with a massive one of steel plate again for another nine years. That would be great.
Okay, I'll go investigate again. I'll get back to you folks next month.
Thanks, Casey.
All right, thank you. Community members, anybody, anything for D O T? Okay, nothing heard. Okay, thank you, Casey. Appreciate it. All right, we're going to move on to board business real quick. So the wildfire prevention efforts for I A. I put this in here. I think the H F D answered a lot of the questions, but this is in here for some of the board members who've had issues or not issues per se, but concerns about the wildfire prevention. Thoughts on that, or can I remove it going forward? Board members. Everybody good?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'm going to remove it from now on then. Because it did sound like when I talked to H F D, it sounds like they're adding trucks. They're looking at certain areas where they're going to perform different types of activities. Okay. All right, the next one I had on the list, I had a homeowner or resident talk about speeding about Uluuni Drive or Street right down over here, over there. So what can, we need to talk, I guess that's a city road, so we would need to talk to city D O T about that?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, you guys have some kind of action you're looking for.
So what I was, what, what, what the homeowner was suggesting is what we did when we came to the Lava Heights Road, where we put in those raised crosswalks, and that stopped the speeding along that route and do the same thing, basically.
Yeah, so requests like that, I would definitely recommend you just to pass them straight to a, um, HAWU, the mayor's rep.
Okay.
And then at that point, you can put through the system and send the D P S, and then they can give you guys really prompts on the feasibility of that.
Right there. Okay, all right, so we'll do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Reading Cudaro, council member. I represent Uluuni, all of Uluuni, Uluuni. And of course, speeding has been a problem in that area. Well, before I, I acquired Uluuni in my district, of course, you see Representative Sam Kong's, you know, no need for speed, you know. And something that we've had updates about, that I would like to, hopefully in the future, which is why I'm really glad that we do have this on the agenda, is a consideration for different traffic mitigation along Uluuni. So it does help to note that those lanes are really wide, and there's also not just the lanes in general, but the driving lanes, but also, I guess, the turning lanes. So there's different discussions there. As the city considers different priorities, they also take consideration prioritizing H P D calls. I know that there was a concern about like, whenever there's accidents, are there recommendations that this H P D provides to the city department? We had actually talked about that just today with the, with the status update on the Awahua congestion plan. And so in the future, maybe I'll work through the mayor's rep to possibly get something about this addressed here at the neighborhood board. I do know that when, I do want to note that if and when change does occur with safety, do you know that not everyone will be happy when there are safety measures taken? People will feel like if, if any traffic mitigation occurs, the roads may be smaller, lanes will be smaller. I don't know if any parking will be removed, but this is all something that is very early on in the discussions. But really, calling H P D, making these reports, coming to this neighborhood board, contacting me in my office, working with us, especially helps to up these priorities that also have been identified in the Awahua congestion plan.
So this is the same street a few years ago where they wanted to remove the crosswalks along there. Remember that? And, and they wanted basically folks to walk about a quarter to a half a mile to a crosswalk to come back around. So, yeah, I mean, it's just another ongoing thing with this particular street, so.
Something that's ongoing, but I do know and have met with the department for very future action that we do need to provide a really good outreach for in our community about. So hopefully we can work that with the mayor's rep and the neighborhood board chair to get that presented to the neighborhood board.
So, I mean, should we just go ahead and put in a ticket, I guess, and then start tracking it that way?
I don't want to for sure say there's a project, project, but they are starting to do their studies for a possible project to address, address the speeding issue. So how priorities come about is when there is really longstanding issues that your representative state senators
Right.
and council members do bring up, and a lot, and as you know, this has been a long time concern. And so I do know it is something that is pretty high on being worked on. So I think requesting for the department, the board requesting for the department to come to you and present about the possible project and what they want to address, and also maybe you can add them the concerns that they've received to allow them to come up with on their proposal.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Uh, go ahead.
As far as striping the roadway, as far as striping the roadway, the streets, how often does that happen? Because there's a lot of roads in the area. You can't even see the lanes there. So I'm just guessing where I am a lot of times, judging by the car next to me. But is that done every five years, ten years? Not at all? How often is that done?
So we did ask, and we do know that they try to do this, the repainting when they do possible changes such as repaving or patching potholes. So with that, it also helps when there are requests made for restriping or repainting as well. So I'm not, I know I'm not stating a specific period of time, but every so often would be like for, for three to five years for looking at the resurfacing or patching of the road. We actually discussed this at the town end of last year too. But a lot of times, especially for this administration, has been a lot of community reporting either from neighborhood board or through the mayor's office.
But just in general?
Okay, okay. Hold on, sir, 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 sir. I want to stick to just this particular topic. You guys are kind of going way off topic there. But it's okay. So, sir, keep that question and bring it up when Councilmember Cudaro does her report. All right. Ron?
I've heard that those speed bumps create a lot of noise in residential areas.
They do, yeah.
May, there may be a lot of unhappy residents who get stuck there.
Especially the ones that live next to those speed bump.
But it cuts down on the speed though, because I know the ones that they, the tabletops they installed over there on Halal's lights have made a difference.
Yeah.
With the speed. So I just want to make a statement, you know, on Hali Street, because I live right over there. My family's been there since nine years. So Uluuni Street has gotten wider over the decades. And I know, I know when Senator Green Harvey Mordo, that's what kind of narrowed it by putting those little parking lines on the street. And so it kind of, that was also had mitigated, but it hadn't helped at all. And so I might also put up that speeding monitoring device with that, you know, tracking the speed and things of that kind. That makes no difference as far as either. So, you know, on Halava Heights, it has made a difference with those three more top speed measures. So maybe that's something that the cities would have to look for, and now putting it on Uluuni Street as well.
Okay, all right. All right, any other comments, questions, Logan?
Yeah, we'll just say the biggest benefit to what Councilman Cudaro said about you guys requesting D P S to prevent you guys is them explaining different options rather than just doing a traffic study, because there will be a give and take, right? If you guys want any safety on the area, there will be, you know, some takeaway.
Right.
Increase in noise, more traffic in the area, right?
Can, can you reach out to D P S for us?
Absolutely. So like I said, when we get to HAWU, but I'll make a note to include that in the report or request for a presentation.
Okay, perfect. Because I do have other questions for them too, so. Okay, thank you. All right, any other things about this, or we can move on to O triple C? Okay, nothing hurts. Okay, okay, we're going to move on to O triple C. Ms. Shar?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairwood, members of the board, aloha and Happy New Year. Thanks for giving us a few minutes tonight. My name is Kathy Hochar. I'm representing the University of Hawaii Community Design Center. If, as you might recall, in November, our team introduced our work with the department, the newly renamed the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. Um, we described our work to engage stakeholders around alternative models, uh, for an O triple C and a community-based continuum of care. Um, I did, we did at that time explain that our work, uh, is running in parallel to Bettina's work at A H L with the intent that it will augment and inform the design work that will follow. Um, and follow up to that, we would like to invite the I A community to our O triple C community engagement workshop. So I'm going to try to share my screen here. Let's try that. Did that work? Can everybody see that? I think I lost access to everyone else. Um, but a little bit about this event, um, we will be providing updates from D C R. Uh, we will also be gathering feedback from the community through hands-on co-design activities. The, the event itself is planned for Thursday, February first, uh, six to eight P M at the I A Elementary School Cafeteria. This is the postcard that will be sent out, um, to about nine thousand addresses, so we, that should be in the mail in the next couple of days to all of the residential and business addresses, uh, adjacent to the O triple C, um, site. Um, once people have this postcard, or of course they might receive it through, through you all, uh, there's a Q R code that will take them to our project website. Um, we kindly ask that people RSVP so that our team can plan our activities and refreshments accordingly. And with that, that's really all I have. We're really enthusiastic and eager to gather feedback from you all, so please forward this along to anyone who might be interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, any questions, comments, O triple C? Okay, nothing heard. Community members? Nothing heard? Okay, alright, thank you. Okay, moving on, next agenda item, uh, use of board funds. So I brought this up with the board back in November about ideas about using funds. Um, uh, any board members have any suggestions for the use of board funds? Okay, nothing heard. Oh, go ahead, Kimo. Logan?
Yes, but something like that, I would definitely recommend just putting into a request into the city, uh, Department of Facility Maintenance, stuff like that is covered by the, you just need to put it right, right? Um, as far as the board funds, I would really set aside for the board for you guys to go out into the community and raise awareness of your meeting base. And so it's a little specific to that, I, I'm not really sure, there's no like, you know, hard thought, like what exactly the funds can be used for, but something like that, I think, it just seems like it's all about putting in a request to the, uh, another thing for that.
Okay, alright, alright, if the board doesn't have any suggestions, um, I will go ahead and probably develop some ideas and I'll send it to you folks, okay? Alright, and see what we come up with. Jane? Oh, well, the ones I considered got shot down pretty quick, so, um, so I was looking at like scholarships and things like that and I was told no. Um, but, um, I'll have to come up with some of those ideas, so give me some time with that. Yeah, can we use it for recognition things and that, those kind of activities?
Seeing boards do that, I would have to double check.
Okay, can you check that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, Pro City does do, don't they? Yeah.
And they make sure they bring lay and have a.
Yeah, I heard Chair Red specifically done that in the past, so.
Yes.
I would recommend if you have a certain thing for recognition on the next board meeting, you know, ahead of time, I can check it. Cause we're always wanna pronounce certificates or stuff, but as far as like, you guys want like head duty plaques or laid, that, that might be something like.
Would we be able to recognize like students?
Absolutely. Uh, special recognition is, uh, not all of the boards do it, but there is, um, space in meetings for special recognition for you guys to bring community members forward and, uh, recognize them at your meetings, just cause, um, yeah, this is a public forum at the end of the day, right? So it's a great place to recognize people that are noteworthy in the community.
Okay, alright, alright, good idea, thanks. Alright, cool. Okay, alright, um, any other comments? I think we're kinda already setting down a path on that, so that sounds like a good idea. Okay, um, alright, let's move on to the approval of the regular meeting minutes for Tuesday, October tenth, twenty twenty-three, uh. Did I, is that typo? Did I do a typo on that? I have two dates in there. Oh, October and November, okay, yeah, yeah.
We had a backlog one month, sorry.
Oh. Okay, 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 okay. Alright, uh, so, um, any, any comments about the meeting minutes? Okay, with some minor editing, November, right? Okay.
Chair, have you met the form, uh, amount, let there a number of, um, important, so we have to find.
Yeah, yeah, we have form, yeah, yeah.
I see some new faces in the title.
Oh, yeah, 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 we got form, so Logan would have told me right away before the meeting, so.
We may have form, but sometime we're back, but people have been putting in attendance.
Okay, uh, alright, any comments, questions about October's or, or November's meeting minutes? Go ahead, Logan.
Uh, Chair, I would just recommend, uh, I know Billy caught my one typo on the November date. I would just recommend that you entertain a friendly amendment to, uh, amended data, get that reflected in the.
Okay. No, 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 you're the one who pointed it out, so.
The beginning of November is, um, grabs. The box above. On the first page, November is misspelled. Put the rest of them spell right.
Thanks. Okay, uh, anybody else? Okay, um, Francie, you said you, Pearl Ridge needs to be one word, right? Not two? Okay, so just make that edit for the future.
Mind if I kinda lump that into one motion that?
Yeah.
Bill made and Francie seconded to make amend November and then Pearl Ridge.
Right.
That makes sense.
Yes. So the motion will be to, uh, correct the error that, uh, or the misspelling of November, uh, on the first page of the November minutes. And also, uh, to correct, uh, the wording for Pearl Ridge from two words to one word. Right? Okay, so, and Bill, you went ahead and submitted that motion, Francie, you're seconding that motion. Are, are there any objections? Hey, nothing heard, motion's passed. Okay, let's go ahead and make a motion for approval of the rest of the minutes, right?
Uh, we already have that on the table.
Okay.
Jane, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we did commit to amend, you guys need to.
Second, second and vote?
We have the second from, uh.
Oh, okay, okay, alright, alright, so any objections to the way the meeting minutes are written for October and November, uh, twenty twenty-three?
With the amendments.
With the amendments, sorry. Hey, nothing heard. Hey, minutes have passed for October and November twenty twenty-three. Sound good? Okay, alright, okay.
Chair, can I say something? Uh, Russell Tsuji, I.
Yeah, go ahead.
I did not get a copy of the minutes or the agenda sent to me, I was just wondering, is there a protocol going on with the county? I thought they usually send the board members a copy of the agenda.
Russell, is it Logan, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, did, I will check, uh, do you request the minute by mail or email or vote?
Either, either, either is fine with me.
Okay, I'll double check on that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, cause I, I got them in the mail, so.
Okay, I never, I didn't receive one for this morning, I think. Okay, yeah, if any board members aren't getting their minutes, please just let me know, I'll, I'll check on that first thing tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, uh, let's move on to residents' community concerns. I know there's some here, so sir, go ahead. Welcome back, by the way, it's been a while.
You know what I mean, right? My name is, uh, Douglas Doris. And I live at one-one, one-nine-nine Colorado Street. On South Lake, uh, I live in a corner house, turning left into Colorado Street. And I need to share some important things to, to, uh, board here. I already, uh, emailed to, uh, to Councilwoman Cudaro the information that, uh, I'm gonna give to you folks tonight. And it's a concern that my wife and I need to tell you folks, because if we don't, we don't stay there and something really bad happens, it's gonna be on us. We know about it. What I'm talking about is the accidents that happened at the intersection of Colorado and South Lake. Right across the stadium is where Colorado is at, the parking lot, you guys know that. To get on South Lake coming down from the Howden Rail Station, coming down, that's South Lake coming down. Now, if you approach Colorado Street or McDonald, we're not toward the stadium, and you wanna turn a left on Colorado Street. That's where the danger starts, because what you're looking at is the green lights that's looking at you here. And also a green light that's across the street, is the deceiving green light, in the sense where I lived there, Mr. Wood lived there, so we know you have to pause and let the cars coming down to South Lake before you turn into our, our street. But now that you have people that come to our, our street that don't know the area, what happened is they come to this green light here, they see the green light across the street, so they think they have to run away or making that left turn. And what happened is we have a broadside accident at that street. Not once, not twice, not three times, not four times, not five times, maybe six or seven times. Now, when this car is making that left turn into our street and the cars are coming down South Lake, that's where the action starts. So he hits this car here, it ricochets off this car and it goes into my wall. Now, there's five times that this car got into my wall. Now, like I said, if my wife and I don't approach you folks and talk to women there, that something's gonna happen, something's gonna big happen. My grandson, coming home with his friend, who never was in that area before, made that left turn, looking at the green light across the street and got broadside by a Hummer, the biggest car you can think of on the road. Luckily, he didn't get hurt. So we're looking at the situation, what can we make it better for us, for people that come to the area? At least what we need here is a sign. There's no sign on that green light, on that pole there, that says, "Left turn, green light with caution." Something like that, something simple. You don't have, we don't have no signs like that, telling people to be cautious because these cars are coming down. Now, the cars that are coming down should be twenty-five miles an hour. But then we have the, the twenty-five, the thirty, the thirty-five, the forty, people coming down really hard. One guy hit my wall so hard and cut into my yard and it almost hit my house. That's our fine, fine event. Like I said, my wife and I are looking at this and if we, if we don't do anything, it's on us, but we know what's gonna happen. But this has to be looked at right now, yesterday, and it's been looked at. So she's coming off Camp Highway, turning left onto South Lake, the Howden Road Station, you're gonna see a twenty-five mile an hour sign. And then if you drive all the way down, they go, they curve back down, the next twenty-five mile an hour sign you see is, is almost by the light. So what we're looking at is, there's not enough twenty-five mile an hour sign going down that, that, that tight street. That's the danger, pulling the car down. How do we slow these cars down? So I, I told, uh, Radiant, uh, but maybe what we needed, there is a crosswalk right across you, the construction area, maybe we can get a high, right, crosswalk there, so these cars down, coming down that street. But you guys need to take a look at this because it's gonna happen, somebody's gonna get killed. So hopefully I'll pack this on to you, I already gave it to her, so if something get together and take a look at this, I mean, really take a look at this because it's gonna happen if, if, if it doesn't take care of. At least a sign that says caution, left turn caution, green light, before you start turning sideways. It's something to tell these people that you can't just go on green light. And hopefully that it slows track it down. But like I said, it's not one time, two times, three times, four times, we're talking about, it is eight times.
The latest one was like, what, October, November, November?
One just happened.
Yeah, like November, right?
The end of the year.
Oh.
It just happened.
Okay, the one that took out your wall, I saw that.
And it went to the wall. Like I said, it goes into the wall because it hits this car.
Yeah.
And it kinda like ricocheted and goes into this wall here. And that's what all the crosswalk and the walkway that, with the wall.
Okay.
So, like I said, you really need to take a look at this thing, I mean, and hopefully, uh, Councilwoman really takes a look, it's, it's something that had to be done yesterday. And that's how we, how we talk in the area. Need to really take a look at this thing, but I'm finished with it, I wanted to get killed on, really get hurt.
Okay, yeah, something we bring up with Haku as well too?
Yeah, like, like a sign installation like that, and, uh, even, I mean, I know you're saying that time is a concern, but, um, yeah, I mean, if you have a D P S representative.
I think sign is the first thing, honestly, if you're making that left turn, even just having the light that has the arrow, green arrow, to tell you when you can turn, would probably be beneficial too, but, yeah, cause there's signage along there, there is some, uh, like coming out of the McDonald's, they still making a legal left out of there, okay? Like, they don't pay attention to it, um, but, you know, you know what I'm talking about. And so, so, um, so, yeah, they're probably gonna, we're gonna need, we're gonna need D P S to take a look at that, that. Yeah.
Radiant Office actually forwarded that information on to the Department of Transit, correct?
Oh, we asked the Department of Transportation to look into it, they can provide their expertise as by one of the best solutions.
Right, can we lump them in with the, the?
Yeah, you guys are requesting a presentation, but I'll make that a separate request, um, just to get an answer, and then when they have a representative, hopefully here next month, you guys can pose those questions, but I'll, I'll put in that request as well.
Yeah, lump them together though, so that they know that they need to brief us on both, both of those, yeah. Okay.
As we reach this, and as that's, they're speeding and in some line turn is a, uh, yeah, on that, no, it's still, yeah.
I cannot understand with all the accidents and everything, why is that department being a snail, taking so long to do something about it?
Well, we'll find out. We'll have them drag them in here and find out, so.
Well, like I said, if we didn't say it, it's on me and my wife. But apparently now, it's on you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they're, they're all good, they're all good. Yeah, thank you, thank you, sir. Okay, any other comments, residents?
That's a similar situation by Halaba Heights and Yuluni Street, where people actually die at that intersection. So the point with a homeowner, maybe they'll make that his wall like a double wall.
Yeah, we wanna avoid that. I don't wanna, I don't wanna encroach on this as far as basketball or any areas. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, uh. I don't think so. The, the last study that was done was when we were talking about, um, um, the Halaba Apartments. They did a traffic study through that area because of the increase in traffic concerns, um, but that was the last time that was done. And they didn't, and they were looking at it from an aspect of like the parking and things like that, they weren't looking at it from like how to enter it from South Lake Boulevard.
When that, that particular intersection had come up and been brought to board before?
No, yeah, maybe before me. Bill, did that intersection come up before I even got on the board?
Uh, not done for two, not done for two for a while. But there, I remember people talking about it, but that was, that was, and.
Yeah.
In the nineteenth, I mean, not nineteen sixty or something like that, but twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
I would like to, yeah, that study done upon potentially having like a roundabout, bigger sized one, like in, uh, South Lake where the one L goes through.
Right, right, right.
That one, the, by the high school too.
So.
Big, big like that, because we had the. Big like that, because we have the buses that go right through that. There you go.
Okay, okay. Hey, guys, um, sir, ma'am? Mr. Torres?
Slow it down.
Okay, uh, okay, uh, we'll go ahead and move on, cuz I know, I know, I'm getting pinged over there. Um, okay, so moving on to elected officials, uh, State Governor Josh Green's representative, Janelle? She raising her hand?
Sorry.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Uh, good evening and happy new year to chairboard members and the members of the public. Jana Osanishi, the, uh, Department of Agriculture Public Information Officer, representing Governor Green. There were no questions for me from the board last session or last meeting, so I'll just remind everyone that the governor has uh his monthly newsletter out, and uh you can um access it at governor.hawaii.gov. Um, he has a December newsletter that outlines the blueprint for affordable housing. The governor hopes to uh is, to build eight hundred uh affordable units this year statewide. And uh on the newsletter, it does have a link to detailed plans for his affordable housing plan. The, the January one uh has uh notes national awards for the state cybersecurity system, which is the state's information's uh system for against cyber attacks. And also the Medicaid Mediquest program, Medquest program, also received national award. So um that's it, is again, it's at governor.hawaii.gov. I can take any questions.
All right, Russell, you got a question? Hold on, you're on mute. Can you unmute yourself, or maybe Logan can do it?
Sorry about that, thank you.
There you go, go ahead.
Thank you, Janelle. Uh, my question was, and I saw an article that the governor is proposing to use about a half, a half a billion dollars of uh state funds uh for maybe rebuilding Maui. The, the My question is really about whatever happened, or I haven't read or heard or anything about insurance proceeds, and I'm assuming the houses that burned down had some form of insurance, if businesses were, or they would have had insurance, I mean I haven't heard anything, and what is the status of that, and is the insurance company is just not paying, or what, what's going on?
Okay, I will ask them that specific question. So you're asking does the insurance companies pay?
Well, I mean, I, I'm hearing that the state is putting in public funds to help rebuild the uh structures or, or even some homes that may have been destroyed by fire, but I would have expected fire insurance to be available, or were these uninsured homes? Or underinsured homes? What's the status? We just haven't heard anything about the insurance proceeds.
Okay, I will check and see.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Hey, community members, any questions for Governor Green's office? All right, Lawrence.
There was a recent article that the DOE had four hundred sixty-five million dollars lapse. Um, as far as the person or who would need to be responsible for overseeing that lapse. I don't know, sounds like the DOE, every time I read articles, something is going on there, and people are not stepping up to be responsible, because right after um, I guess, the Department of Education Superintendent got his evaluation. He got graded on good grades, he got a pay raise. Right after that, he said, "Oh, I just heard about this lapse after." But is there any way that you can have better scrutiny as far as how the taxpayer money is being spent?
Okay. I can pose that to the Department of Education.
All right, thank you, thank you. Okay, uh, thank you for your uh report.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Representative Ed Green's office? Oh, I'm sorry, Representative Ed Case's office. Green is gone. I know, it's only twenty twenty-four. Uh, okay, so Representative Ed Case, okay, Nestor's up there, okay. Um, District fifteen, uh, State Senator Wakai's office. Okay, nothing heard. Okay, Mr. Alafonte?
Hi.
Hi, happy new year.
Happy new year, Chair Wood, Vice Chair Mississauga, members of the board, uh, members of the public, I'm Brandon Alafonte from the State Senate. I wanna introduce my staff that's with me in person and online. Also, online, we have Janice Salcedo, she's my office manager, uh, so.
Hi, everyone, happy new year.
So she's online, uh, when you call our office, you more likely will hear her, and obviously many of you know she's been with me now, entering my tenth year in public service. With me also is uh Michael Grino, Michael Grino is my legislative analyst. So he does uh bills, uh resolution, analysis, and all that, so we have questions relating to that. You've also seen or written a report on proposed legislation for this coming session, uh, now with Michael. And I'd also like to introduce, yet also reintroduce, uh, Taylor Sells. Taylor Sells has recently graduated from the University of Rochester, she's an IA resident, so she's back home. And she was my intern when I was at the city council, and so this is her kind of first full time, so she's our session hire for, so we could just welcome all of them. So thank you staff for coming. So you might, during session, you might see one of them uh in place of me if I'm not able to attend. Um, I also wanna mention that uh we did have a couple of community things um up by the IA Loop Trail, we've had some residents concerned about military personnel um queuing up before the park opens, even from DNR staff, so our office wrote a letter to Endo Paycom, Admiral Akalino. And so we're hoping to get a response to put it out to the military to say, hey, you know, please don't queue up as it impacts residents from trash collection and getting in and out of their properties.
So you're talking about the second gate, right?
The very first gate as you enter going up to the Loop Trail, right by the residential home, right by the.
Right, okay, I know what you're talking about, okay.
Yeah, um, I know men, there's some mention about speeding on Lunay and whatnot, but in particular, we had some calls about speeding on H one freeway, so we put in the request to HPD to do enforcement. I know Sergeant Ege was on here, so we just put that in this week, uh, in working with Councilmember Cordero and Councilmember Opimodo. And then, um, I know you talked about you had on your agenda regarding fire setback. Um, one thing that's not listed on my report is, um, I'm working on legislation to require a state and county and any government property to do a thirty-foot setback clearance. We've had some concerns, we've been working with DNR, I know Administrator Suji, he wears a different hat. Uh, we've been doing site visits and in the community, looking at what are some ways that government can cut back some of the debris to create that fire break in that sense. Um, I know Board Member Burgess, you mentioned about painting over graffiti, was your concern specifically at the um old commemorial drive-in area, the wall?
And there's also that, um, that big Russell Award, how people are putting it.
Yeah, so thank you for bringing that, uh, Councilmember Cordero and I, we both have that area, we, we've been in contact, so it's actually, that's private property. Managed, correct, um, that is, um, Robertson Properties Group, but their commercial manager is Avalon, his name is Cody. We've been in contacts, and just as recent as today, I sent them photos of the graffiti and what's been on the sign, so hopefully they'll take care of that, on that sense. So I just wanted to just highlight some of those updates, and uh, again, mahalo to Board Member Vasquez, I do remember that time when we both came on board, uh, wish you the best.
Thank you.
I know this is not a farewell, so I'll say ahuiho.
Thank you.
And that completes my report, and happy to take questions.
All right, any questions for the senator?
You know that stream my mom was doing as I passed there, you know, where it is there? Oh, now that man is living on the inside of this, now how can that, he has rights to being?
Yeah, if I think, so.
What's the status of it?
Um, I don't know the status of it, is that, is that your area or that? Yeah, so I'll defer to Councilmember Cordero, but from what I remember, um, he's living on a property that's owned by family.
Yeah, oh, so that's okay?
As long as the family's probably up there.
Yeah, sure it is. HPD in the past has worked with the landowner to see what they could do to, you know, assist, um, so that's really up to the landowner um with that person that's living there on the stream. Yeah, I know he's been there for um years, yeah, and I know Board Member Surtu, um, you know, she lives in that area as well, so, you know, they're aware of that situation, right on, um, was it Hickox, was it, um, Hickox Street, yeah.
Has any outreach programs gotten with him, or?
Yeah, we have done, I don't know what has been done in recent, but uh, you know, the unfortunate part is they have to wanna have service.
And I have another question.
Sure.
I listen to, and I read, and I wanna ask you this. Along that line, along the, behind the fire, that man, Mr. One that's on TV that I lived here, now it shouldn't have happened, and, and further down, I heard somebody say that this, the people who got hurt in that fire cannot sue the, you know, the water supply that people then cannot go after the state, you know, the governor and all that money, because if they're gonna get that money, you know, returned, neither, that's fair or unfair, I mean, you know, it's our government. And uh, you know, they all took a loss, but the project, it said, they can't sue the governor of the state, is that true?
If I have no further comment on that, cuz I know there's pending lawsuits.
Yeah, yeah, I know, lawsuit. Okay, that's enough.
Okay, all right, all right, all right, uh, okay, um, any other questions? Okay, community members, any questions for the senator? Sir, oh, you wanna come up, sir?
Yeah, we did those thanks, Rayden, Rayden.
Yeah. You might wanna wear tennis shoes next time, so.
I want to thank us, Senator Alafonte, for introducing this bill regarding electrical vehicle batteries. In fact, I did talk to Bill over at Battery Bills, and he is not accepting discarded old used electric vehicle batteries. I know in our past neighborhood board meeting, um, someone said that he was taking those batteries, but he's not taking those batteries. I was just wondering, uh, when you introduce that bill, is there any way that you can tack on some kind of fee? When they buy the car, if they can buy like a disposal fee, like we have a recycle bottle fee? Because I don't think it's fair, the general community has to pay for disposing of other people's batteries.
Yeah, thank you, Lawrence, for that, we'll take that into consideration, that's a good suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
I thought we looked at that, and I thought the, I thought the dealerships were supposed to take in those batteries.
I work at a dealership, and we have what we call a coffin, so all the batteries goes into that coffin and send it back to general owners.
So I thought the dealerships were supposed to be doing that.
So this, this kind of mirrors a New Jersey proposed legislation to create a program. And so whether it's the dealership, or say like Tesla, um, they have to come up with a program on how they properly dispose it. So some instances, dealerships may do that.
Okay.
But in other cases, this is to kind of, you know, in light of the recent tragedy in La Haina on August eighth. You know, there's a lot of EV batteries lying around, so how do we properly dispose of that?
Okay.
Uh, for those that don't do that, to sort of comply, so it's really getting ahead of the curve. Um, because there's nothing in place right now.
Is there a way to make the dealerships comply?
This is one way.
Okay.
We can, you know, as we go through the legislative process to get feedback, and we hope the dealerships or the automotive group will come to the table and participate.
Okay.
I agree with you a hundred percent, if the car is under warranty, once the warranty is done, then the car gets disposed of, the dealer has no um responsibility for that car. So once you pass a five years or whatever that time period.
Any, you can call my, my company tomorrow, any car that comes through our dealership, we have a coffin, all the batteries goes into that coffin.
No charge?
No charge.
So.
Yeah, and Chevrolet.
The salvage company that are keeping these, does that talk to Bill over Battery Bills? He said there's no program in place, so he said, um, he doesn't accept any of those batteries, he doesn't love any program, but if that's the case, from what you're saying.
Yeah.
You can call all the salvage yards, no, you can call the salvage yards, you can have them drop off the cars at your dealership.
Yeah, well, any cars for Chevrolet comes to our, if they come to our dealership and we do work on their car, we have what they call a coffin, and it goes back to general.
So even if it's out of warranty, you just take the salvage car?
If they go, if they have work done through us, it goes to we have to take it out, and we have a coffin. If you want me to have our technician follow you and explain to you, I can have that, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Oh. I think what she's getting at is that if it's a Chevy, and you take it to a Chevy dealer, okay? The Chevy dealer is gonna take the battery. If it's a BMW, and you take it to the BMW dealer, the BMW dealer is gonna take the battery.
Look, even if it's on a warranty, they'll still just take.
Okay.
If it goes to our.
If, if any work is done, it doesn't necessarily have to be under warranty.
If our dealership, we will take that battery and put another battery, or we'll do work in our service department.
Oh.
Uh, cuz I, well, here's the thing, I, I talked to Cutter, I, yeah, I talked to Cutter Ford about this, okay? Because I was looking at buying a Ford F-150 Lightning, and they said, even if it's not under warranty, if it's a Ford, and it's got a battery in it, they'll take the battery. So.
Uh, well, like.
Okay.
I think we're talking about different things.
Okay. All right, you're talking about disposal batteries out of vehicle, right? That's what we're talking about. All right.
But I think if I, if I, if I understand Lawrence correctly, you're talking if a battery is out of warranty and the dealer doesn't accept it, right?
Right.
Yeah. Versus if a dealer does, you go to your old dealership.
Okay, but so far, I haven't seen a dealer not accept it, but okay.
Right, I mean, and that's why I mentioned, like, those dealers would.
Yeah.
But in the event that they're not um covered under warranty, this bill would potentially look at that and what would cover if, if you're not, if you're out of the warranty, to create a sort of disposal program.
Okay, okay.
I believe that makes sense.
All right.
Thank you.
It's gonna be a discussion. All right, uh, any other questions? Okay, nothing heard.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. District thirty-one, State Representative Linda Ichiyama. Ma'am, how are you today?
I'm Chair Wood, um, members of the AAN, the neighborhood board, thank you very much for having me. My name is Linda Ichiyama, I represent House District Thirty-One. Um, in the area, last reapportionment, uh, my district changed. Um, and so now my district includes a portion of Makalapa, um, and Tukubai Momi, out to Fort Island. So now I will be attending this neighborhood board, I apologize I couldn't make it last year, I had some family commitments. Um, I distributed a copy of my report, um, just to share with you a little bit about me, it's my first meeting. Um, I'm a Mawalo High School graduate, went away for college on the mainland, came back home to Richardson Law School, and uh been office since twenty-ten, uh, served in many different roles, and currently I am the Chair of the House Committee on Water and Land, as well as the Co-Chair of the Women's Legislative Board. Happy to take any questions or concerns.
Excuse me, can I repeat your name?
Linda Ichiyama. Linda Ichiyama.
What?
Linda Ichiyama.
What department do you represent? She's a representative, ma'am.
The House Representative.
She's a House Representative. Thank you, so.
So State House for Salt Lake, Mualua, and my district changed to include. Nice to meet you all.
Has the Navy been keeping you updated on their activities when it came, okay, to the submarine pens and all that?
I'm sorry, wait.
To the submarine pens?
No.
Okay, so. Yeah.
Thanks, Shaker.
Yeah, so, yeah, because um, it's a, it's a huge project, it's one of the bigger Navy projects ever, right? Exactly, so you might wanna be aware of that, ma'am.
Talking about the dry dock?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm sorry, I know the dry dock project.
Okay, okay.
Millions of dollars.
Right, okay, absolutely, all right.
That's all.
Okay, okay. Yeah, um, and you were saying something about traffic to Fort Island?
Um, the traffic gets backed up sometimes at Fort Island. On Main and Highway, yeah.
Oh, it's bad now. I had the club on the road.
Oh, okay.
It's not every single day, but when it does, it, it, that's.
Yeah. Okay.
There's anything they, they're trying to do. Is it in the morning, at mornings usually? Is it because people are waiting to get onto Fort Island, turning off, right off of Main Highway? Yeah. Thank, thank you very much for bringing it to my attention, we can follow up on that.
Okay, ma'am, appreciate it, yeah, thank you. Hey. Uh, okay, uh, State Representative Ahud?
Please I say that right? Hello, uh, it's Close Chair, it's IU.
I know, I. I know, I, I screwed up every month, but.
No worries. Um, I dropped off my report earlier today. Sorry, I couldn't be with you guys. Um, I also sent it in to Logan, so if you need a copy, um, you can get it multiple ways. Um, I, I just wanna let you guys know there's a survey in my newsletter. Um, I'm probably gonna publish the results in the next few weeks, so if you haven't been able to do the survey and still wanna do it, um, that'll be in my next report. So I just want you guys to be aware so you guys can be engaged in that. Um, other than that, um, that's it and I'll see you guys at the next meeting. Happy New Year. Oh, sorry, 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 one more thing. Um, I was listening to the discussion about the noise um, near Pearl Ridge, so I, we, we've, we've been having budget briefings. The Director of Transportation came in. He's rolling out the pilot program to do the red light cameras and those can be converted to speeding cameras as well as noise cameras. Um, so if that is, if that's an intersection of interest, um, I'll definitely raise that the next time I see him at my Transportation Committee hearing meeting.
Okay. Explain to me noise cameras, what is that?
So it's supposed to be able to monitor levels of noise through the intersection. Um, and I, I'm not totally sure how it works. I'm sure they're gonna roll it out in a pilot, uh, program, but I think they can detect what cars are making what noise or the, the volumes of noises being emitted from cars, so. But I can get you guys more information on that the next time I come.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I appreciate if you could, yeah, bring us some of that or just either send, send Logan an email with some of that information and we can read up on it.
Yes, sure. Uh, this is, uh, Casey, I'll be, um, yes, um, we are working on a pilot project right now. I'm working with the project manager. Once you get the, uh, more information, I can, um, make a presentation at the Neighborhood Board because,
Very cool.
That's, it's a pilot project we're working on. The, the red light, uh, camera program is coming to an end this year, so I'll give an update at next month's meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, any other questions for, uh, the representative? Hey, nothing heard. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Representative Kong. Okay, nothing heard. Okay, um, Mayor's Office.
Good evening, Chair and, uh, members of the community. Haku Millis with, uh, Department of Design and Construction with the city. Uh, just a few quick announcements. I have been listening in, um, and so I know a lot of, uh, issues have been brought up. I'll work with the NCO. I'm getting responses mostly with DTS, um, on a lot of those, but, uh, I'll get through my report, uh, real quick. Um, a few announcements from the newsletter, um, bring on twenty-twenty-four. Happy New Year message from Mayor Rick Blangiardi, uh, twenty-twenty-three. In review, a look at city services by the numbers, uh, a new off, off-leash dog park opens in Salt Lake and a big award, uh, for the city. Mayor's Highlights Newsletter can be found online at oneowahu.org/newsletter. I'll put it in the chat. Um, from the NCO, the Neighborhood Commission Office is hiring Neighborhood Board, uh, assistants to engage in public awareness for community support. Neighborhood assistants can help, uh, coordinate with Neighborhood Board chairs and produce written reports to members of the public. Please send your resume to nco@honolu.gov or call the NCO at eight oh eight seven six eight three seven one zero. I'll put that info in the chat as well. A couple of issues from last time. Uh, there was a question about the new landfill sighting. An update on the status of a new landfill sighting was requested. Is military land still being considered? Uh, Environmental Services responded that the city is working to find a new landfill site, uh, currently, and military land is still being considered as a primary focus and high-level discussions with the military are ongoing. Uh, there was a question about the Westridge Center Bus Stop. The Kalonahi Street, uh, opposite of Westridge Center Bus Station is located next to a fire hydrant. Buses occasionally stage, stage there and block the hydrant. Um, is this an issue that can be addressed? Are buses allowed to park there along, park along the street next to the hydrant? So HPD responded, um, uh, from District Three Community Police Team, they inquired with Department of Transportation Services, learned that several months ago DTS relocated the bus station further away from the hydrant. Um, Sergeant Paiva, uh, made a check and observed that an OTS bus in the area of the bus station was partially blocking the hydrant. This bus was in service and not parked. Um, Sergeant Paiva contacted Josh at OTS Operation Management Office to appraise him of the complaint. Josh said they will remind the bus operators not to leave their buses parked and unattended in the event that access to fire hydrant is required. Uh, HFD also responded and said that since this is an enforcement issue, uh, they defer to, uh, HPD. Uh, those are my announcements and issues. Happy to take any questions that you guys may have.
All right, board members, any questions for the Mayor's Office?
I see. Lune Street over here, that, is that city jurisdiction?
I believe that it is. But I, I'm not sure. I'll have to check with Department of Transportation Services.
If it is city, can you guys at DTS kind of see about, kind of see about the timing of the traffic lights like during school rush hours in the morning afternoon? It takes five to ten minutes just to get past this hundred feet over there by these two traffic lights. Because the timing of it is really bad coming up from the intermediate school and coming up from the Iya Elementary.
Lune, what is the cross street, please?
That right by the intermediate school.
Yeah, right by the intermediate school and when you're coming up from,
Here.
Coming up to Lune Street from the elementary school named Malcolm.
The Iya Heights, no, this one, no, no?
No, it's. It's the road that goes to the intermediate school.
Right, and then the one that comes up.
And it's actually like three or four roads that enter that, which were inter.
Intersect.
Intersect.
Yeah. There's, there's, it's four-way traffic like right over there, um, within two, two areas and within a hundred feet of each other. So it gets to become a real mess during, uh, morning time for me and when school lets out again as well too, though.
Ula Vea Street and Lune and like Hollywee Echo Street, those three streets inters, intersect, right?
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll check with, uh, DTS.
All right, any other questions, comments to the Mayor's Office? Uh, committee members? Okay, I, I, I think you already have enough notes for everything that was discussed earlier, so, um, I'll probably follow up with you. I'm, I'm gonna be submitting some tickets and I'll give you those ticket numbers so we can start tracking it that way. Because I don't necessarily like the idea of just having nebula, having it be nebulous out there. Um, somebody's working on it. Okay, all right.
Understood. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, uh, Okimota's Office. Can you hear me? Yep, we got you.
Excellent. Uh, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. Uh, Haku's always, uh, pretty thorough, so I'll keep this short. Um, happy holidays and, uh, mahalo for, uh, everyone that joined us at the holiday parade. It's great to be back. Uh, December and the first part of January have been a little bit slower. We've gotten a few calls about the Iya, uh, from an Iya walking group. Uh, the residents are looking to get, uh, some grass trimmed along a parcel on, on Kehela Street. Our office found the grass, uh, is on private property and we have contacted the inspectors to evaluate and report back. Uh, we're looking forward to meeting the new General Manager of Newtown Estates. Um, today we did hear Bill fifty-nine. Um, Bill fifty-two is still, um, still working its way through the process and, uh, Bill forty, uh, also is, um, uh, up, uh, for the next, uh, full council and seeks to establish additional requirements uh, for the Transit Construction Mitigation Fund. I don't think any of that money's been paid out, so this is gonna, uh, uh, help make it easier, I think, for some of the businesses that are negatively impacted uh, to recoup some of those costs. Uh, that should be it. If you have any questions, be happy to, uh, take them.
All right, thank you. Board members, any questions for Councilmember Okimota's Office? Hey, residents, any questions? Okay, nothing heard. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Vera.
Good evening, everyone. Radiant Codaro, Councilmember for Council District Seven. Um, Happy New Year and I know that my colleague Senator Dana Elefante has already left, but I do wanna give him a shout out. His birthday was, uh, the day before, so happy birthday to Senator Elefante. Um, with that, uh, none of my committees have changed, um, so still the same committees. With that, we started our committee week, uh, this week, um, and with a bang with a very long discussion, uh, uh, meeting or hearing, uh, with my committee on budget, uh, something that we, something that we did, uh, tackle uh, was the full funding grant agreement. Um, this is relating to the, um, Honolulu Rail Transportation Project or Transit Project. Um, the funding for this is an agreement between the city and, uh, the federal government uh, where we have not yet received funding since twenty-seventeen. Um, and this agreement began in two thousand and twelve, uh, for one point five five billion dollars. Um, so we have a five-step incremental plan to receive that funding. The, um, normally the federal government does not, uh, really do any amendments to any full funding grant agreement. Um, but, uh, you know, they saw that the project had started up, um, so this amended full funding grant agreement, um, it came before my committee, we, we discussed it. Um, it was something that will allow us to finally receive the funding that has been pending since twenty-seventeen. Um, so I think the first seven point, oh, uh, eight or nine million dollars will come to us um, this year and then, um, fifty-five million, um, every incrementally. I'm not sure one hundred percent. Um, so, uh, that does bring us to, um, um, it does have amendments that really doesn't change from the twenty-twelve, uh, document, uh, but just certain amendments that does change, um, I mean, ad language, uh, which I'm gonna throw out a few terms here and there, um, but it's called minimum operating segment, which is like the first leg of what, um, the full completed segment would be for the rail operations and then the locally preferred alternative. Um, there, back in two thousand and twelve, back when I was still in school, um, I think there were discussions about going down Salt, Salt Lake Boulevard, um, going down Nimitz or, uh, Nimitz Highway or, um, other ways, so, or actually, yeah. Now it goes through the airport and everything like that, so locally preferred alternative to its current route. Um, and, uh, that is something we discussed today. Another huge thing that we discussed in my committee uh, was relating to the, uh, American Rescue Plan Act, another, another federal funding that the city has received uh, relating to COVID relief and, um, this is in relation to hazard pay for first responders. Um, a lot of our city agencies, uh, were on the front lines of responding and so this, um, proposal would put uh, about possibly eighty million dollars into the OPEB. OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits Provision or, um, funding uh, with the city and County of Honolulu. Um, so this transfer was requested by the city administration, Mayor Blangiardi. Um, normally they do this and then via letter and then, um, after fifteen days it goes through without any hearing or public notice or information. Uh, the council chair waters as well as council vice chair Kiaina rejected. Um, it not to say that we don't support the hazard pay, it's just to say that we want, um, um, a public hearing about this. I, I deferred this, um, this proposal, not because I don't, uh, uh, not because I oppose it, but because there's funding, um, information that we need to have and there's pending litigation uh, with UP, uh, United Public Workers that, um, I will need to go into executive session, um, for. So, uh, with that, I do have amendments to my committee, um, calendar, as this was done before my committee was pal. And so, um, in addition to these calendar of events, we have a special committee on budget, which are, which is going to be on, um, January sixteen, twenty-twenty-four at one P M. With that, um, we also, I also brought up in, um, the committee on transportation today that we talked about pedestrian safety or Oahu Pedestrian Plan. Oahu Pedestrian Plan, although it talks about walking, it talks about safe streets for all. So, um, including the, um, different intersections that we, um, that we mentioned today. Um, moving on in my report, I do have updates as well as, um, resources, but one thing I do wanna talk about, um, as, uh, Senator Elefante talked about how we worked with, um, the management at, at, on different issues in our community. Uh, there, something that we worked on, that he referred me to, uh, referred, um, to me was the Iya Annex Ball Field and Surrounding Fencing. So I have an update about that, uh, relating to work starting last month, um, mid-last month. And hopefully it will be able to be pal, um, this, uh, middle of this month. But of course with the rains and different things, of course, if you're not gonna put fencing, it's not gonna settle, so I'm definitely gonna follow up on that. Uh, with that, I also have, um, some more resources. Uh, but another information about curb improvements in the district. There's two in my council district, one in Salt Lake, and also one in Iya at Heliponia Place and, uh, and, uh, Muana Lua Road. I'm sorry, you know, that's a lot. I wanted to put all of that in. Um, with that, I do also, uh, yes, wanna note that I have taken all the notes, especially throughout the whole discussion, uh, of course. I look forward to, um, the requests, uh, that you'll take it and work with.
Okay, great. Any questions for the council member?
Yes, um, Ekaha and Muana Lua Road in your area.
Muana Lua Road, yes.
Okay, so, um, why don't you follow up? I think I asked this a while back, but I, I talked to Mr. Manuel at that corner again. They wanted to see when is it possible to put up that, they put up that sign again, they got completely wiped out last, you know, before that show down there.
Yeah, okay, I can follow up on that. Okay, Mr. Manuel, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's at Corner House over there next to that.
The, the two-story, yeah, on the, at the end, yeah.
Right.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Residents, any questions for the council member? Okay, nothing here. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, let's move on to reports. Board members attending other, uh, meetings. Anybody got anything they wanna report? Okay, nothing heard. All right, uh, IA Community Association, I don't think. Players on. Yeah, okay, uh, just to plug hers, I think it'll be Monday, February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four at seven P M. Is her next one? Is that right? Yeah, okay. All right, all right, uh, for committees, I have nothing for executive. Chemo? Transportation? Hey, Lynn?
I don't have any.
Okay, Paul?
Nothing.
All right, planning zoning, Chemo, Chemo, nothing. Okay, Restoration Advisory Board, Military?
Um, the RAB meeting that was supposed to happen last month, um, got postponed again because communication, um, issues.
Okay.
Coordination. Um, and then I also wanna, um, let people know that, um, there is a event on January thirty, two thousand and twenty-four, Tuesday, five-thirty P M at Aliu Leni Hale, which is the Supreme Courthouse building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, celebrating Civil Liberties and Constitution Day, honoring Bernie Mao. He's gonna be speaking. I'm also now going to.
Okay, all right, anything else?
Also tweet the cell.
Okay.
Hashtag shut down Red Hill.
All right, all right, anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
One question. I read for the Lester. It says watch neighborhood board meetings online. Is that it on our TV? I don't.
Oh, yeah, the, the NCO has, um, a YouTube channel. A new YouTube channel, because there wasn't one, one before.
It used to be forty-nine.
Is this, is, if this is.
On YouTube. On the website YouTube. And that's.
Was that addressing, yeah? Okay. All right, that's. Okay, uh, okay, uh, Red Hill Phil, thanks, Tracy.
Nothing to report.
Okay, all right, Education Culture, Danny.
Um, yeah, I can put the information in the chat, but, um, Ho'ola Hoya Kalawal continues to have third Saturday workdays and then I'm following up with local, you, uh, what their workdays will be for this year.
Okay, great, all right. Okay, uh, announcements, um, moving on to announcements. We have, uh, the next regular board meeting will be February thirteenth at seven P M here at the, at the library. Uh, we got the Olelo, you know, broadcast, uh, that happens, um, every last Thursday at six P M and then, uh, there's a YouTube archive as well. There's a link inside the notes. All right, with that, meeting is adjourned. Thank you guys for coming.
He's not, she has a question.
Oh.